Jake, you, Dave, Hector, and Levy.
Hello.
And who else is here? Who's the fifth?
Levy.
Oh, Levy Isaacson, let's see his picture. Okay, so we can start, and we won't do the correspondence first.
Yes, we can start.
Okay, so I'll call the meeting tomorrow. Let's rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic, which we stand one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ally, could you please read this certification of compliance?
The location of this meeting was published in the Asprey Park Press and the State Department and posted on the bulletin board in the office. It would have been thirty-eight hours in advance. Look has the right to return this meeting and reasonable comprehension of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meeting Act.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Stern. Mr. Mr. Flansbrough. Mr. Herzl.
Here.
Mr. Renner.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Ratzick. Mr. Fuentes.
Here.
And Mr. Ackerman.
Okay, swearing to professionals, Mr. Jackson. There.
Mr. Vogt, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony you'll give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? I don't see him. There he is. Did you hear that?
And I didn't hear him.
Uh, do you swear from testimony you'll give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Somebody muted me. Uh, I'm working digitally tonight, so if I get muted, I'll have to get unmuted.
I will do my best. It's difficult for me to do the mute and show the plans.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so Ally, you wanted to do, do we have five people to do the correspondence first?
Um, no, we do not. We're waiting for Mr. Stern or Mr. Sable.
Okay, so then let's continue on. And I just wanted to do the correspondence first. Mr. Fuentes has said the whole time, but if we don't have a quorum, well, let's go straight and let's go on to the first thing on the agenda.
Okay, we do have.
Well, if we don't have a quorum, we don't have a meeting.
We have a quorum, we don't.
Not for the one correspondence item that has a number of people.
Oh, I misunderstood. I'm sorry. I'll go back on mute. Ally, Mr. Chairman, this is Don Pepe from Scrinsey, Hollandback. I understood that with respect to Mr. Barr's application, there was going to be a request to carry that.
Yes, Mr. Pepe, I'm just getting to that.
Okay, sorry. Thanks, Ally, sorry.
Start with item number one. We did receive an email request from the applicant or Benjamin Barr, from his professionals, to carry that application. Mr. Kishuba, who prepared the plans on that application, is here to address that request to the board. And then I do note Mr. Stern is here, and we can proceed with the correspondence item after we address Mr. Barr's requested carry.
Okay.
Good evening. Joe Kishuba, KBA Engineering Services, Manasquan, Detroit.
Okay, do you have to be sworn in?
Not to ask for an adjournment. You, I understand there's an issue with neighbors, and you've been into the drainage, and you want it carried so that you can circulate the drainage, and see if the neighbors are satisfied with it. Is that about right?
That's correct, Mr.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we pick a date, make the announcement, and then move on from there.
Mr. Jackson.
I would just like to add to the record, though, that, you know, nothing really has happened in this regard between December and this current date, so it's almost two months where the applicant's nothing. The neighborhood has two attorneys present, as well as a professional planner, as well as several members of the neighborhood. So even though I'm not looking to create a defect by suggesting that a request shouldn't be granted, I do think that we want the board to be cognizant of the fact that there are a lot of people who showed up to the.
Mr. Jackson, do we need to put on the record who Mr. Pepe is or who he's representing?
Mr. Pepe sent in a letter of representation, as I recall, because his appearance had been heard before the board already.
Yes, sir, I did send in a letter of.
That's correct. So the record reflects that. And is there other counsel who's here on this matter?
Yes, Lois Sutton, I represent Eli and Grace Sutton. I had entered my appearance via email. I spoke a month ago with a representative of Benjamin Barr. He has not contacted me in the past month. Some of the neighbors objecting. He has refused to contact them. They have reached out to him, who understand the board probably granted, but we'd like it to be on the record. This applicant has not approached the neighbors, and in fact, they had been dealing with him prior to the application. And I reiterate.
Do you oppose the current request to adjourn the matter?
I'm sorry?
Do you?
Mr. Jackson, one second. Isn't the applicant asking to adjourn to meet with the neighbors?
Correct.
Yes, that's what Mr. Kishuba.
One at a time, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, I reviewed an email from Mr. Kishuba that indicated that he, there were issues with drainage that were raised to him, and he has prepared a plan to address that, and certain neighbors wanted time to review it. Otherwise, they're ready to go forward. So, you know, that's the reason for the request.
Just to answer, Mr. Sutton, she was saying that she can't get through to the neighbors. The neighbors want to sit down with her, and that's why they're asking for an adjournment.
No, I said that the neighbors were not approached by Mr. Barr, and he did not approach me, and the surveyor did not approach any of us, except for tonight, half an hour prior, saying they wanted an adjournment.
Okay, so I think, I think the adjournment works for you, so you have time to sit down with the neighbors.
We would request to be carried to the February sixteenth meeting.
Okay. Ally, we have room in the February sixteenth meeting?
Yes, that's fine. I've already made the.
Okay, are both attorneys available on the February sixteenth?
Uh, Sam Bellamy is my planner. I'd like to ask if he's available. I'm checking right now.
I'm available.
Okay, that's Mr. Sutton, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And.
And yes, I should be available.
Okay.
Uh, I'm actually in Jersey, I'm actually in Jersey City on the sixteenth.
Can you meet virtually, whatever you're doing in Jersey City?
I, I could, as long as this board's, you know, if this board would accommodate hearing the application at a time. My application there will be a half hour, so as long as I can get out for that half hour, we can hear this application outside of that half hour.
We have three applications on that night. They should each take about a half an hour. I don't have a problem with going around as needed. It's the same applicant, same professionals, so it could be.
We start at PM, too. What time's your meeting? Say, was Jersey City? Mr. Pepe?
I think we lost him.
This is, this is Sam Bellamy. Jersey City starts at 5:30 PM.
Okay, so it's comparable. All right, well.
So, Mr. Jack, I think we should put him down to the agenda, and you should have plenty of time to get to it. Okay, does that work for everybody? Okay, so, Mr. Jackson, would you like to announce that number two on the agenda will be the sixteenth?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm just grabbing my printed agenda. Members of public, be advised that number two on tonight's calendar, SD twenty-four fifty-seven, the application of Benjamin Barr at forty-one Sunset Road, has been adjourned. We heard on February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, six o'clock, in this virtual format. Those interested persons can check with the township website, where the notice and log on, as indicated, and participate as allowed by law. There will be no further.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Just, Mr. Kishuba, before you go, I just, I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of everyone on the board. By the next, by the next meeting, we would have liked that the neighbors would have been spoken to.
I understand.
I think we'll be disappointed if they have not been.
I have just been recently notified of that, and we did prepare a sketch of a drainage victim, which we will have available for everyone. We will have answers regarding the drainage ready for the following year.
Okay, but just in case there's something else besides the drainage that the neighbors want to discuss, let's give them the opportunity to discuss it.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isaacson. You're correct.
Mr. Kishuba, when this matter goes forward, urge your client to get an attorney, because if we have a contested matter, you're not going to be able to take the lead on the application. You're going to need someone to ask you questions, defend you during cross-examination. So explain to your client that that might be a big problem if he doesn't have an attorney, or if he's not prepared to do it himself at the next year.
Understood. I'll make that abundantly clear to them.
Thank you.
Okay. Ally, are there any other changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, I do believe that the chairman was amenable to taking correspondence item SD twenty-three thirty-eight next.
Okay, only, only that one, because I know we have some conflict with other correspondent people then. Okay, so you could, we're going to.
The board is going to hear SP twenty-three thirty-eight for congregation LUT. This is a correspondence to the board. It's a request to modify a previously approved building addition. I will put up the plans provided by the.
Okay, Ally, is anybody stepping down on this application?
I'm sorry, I don't believe Mr. Flansbaum is here yet, but I believe Mr. Isaacson and Mr. Meyer are both stepping down.
And Mr. Flansbaum is here, but he is stepping down as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and just to confirm, Ally, we have five people besides those three?
Yes, we have Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Herzl, Mr. Renner, and Mr. Fuentes.
Okay, so.
This is Ally. I believe I should step down on this application as well.
One second. Then do we have a quorum?
Not if Mr. Renner steps down.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I believe you go to last. I'm not, if I can check the other. I believe I should, I should be stepping down.
Okay, okay, so then, then we will wait, maybe Mr. Sable will show up. If, let's go, let's go straight. Let's go to number one on public hearing.
The first item under public hearing is four seven five Oberlin Owner LLC. It's a major site plan for an office building.
Okay, Terry, would you like to go through the report, please?
Yeah, if you can bear with me, please, Chairman.
Yes, take it, Terry.
I have to open a copy of the letter and hopefully stay unmuted, so.
Okay.
Let's hope for the best here.
Okay, you're an engineer. You should do it.
But I'm not an IT person. There's the problem.
Okay.
All right, so which one are we doing now, Ally? What's the docket number?
SD twenty-three ninety-nine.
Twenty-three ninety-nine, okay. We're, we're doing Oberlin Avenue, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, bear with me. All right, I'm reading from our January twenty-eighth review. And beginning with the middle of page three of our review under submission waivers, you have proof of submission to planning board, top contours floodplain within the project area two hundred feet, manmade features, plans and profiles, EIS. We can recommend the waivers for hearing purposes for reasons stated in the letter.
Okay, do we have a motion to go along with engineers' recommendations to grant the waivers?
Moved.
Moved. Second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, going on to page four under Roman number three zoning. The site's in the M one zone. You'll hear testimony from Brian, I believe, shortly. You have two pre-existing permitted uses, and you're expanding one. We'll hear testimony confirming that the project is a permitted use. Continuing on, there, there was relief with regard to front yard setback. I believe this has been reviewed. It was approved by the industrial commission, therefore no board actions necessary. It simply has to be corrected on the plans. Continuing on to comment number three, we've gone back and forth with this several times with the applicant's professionals. There was some discussion as to which parking standard applied based on square footage, one per two fifty, which was adopted for this zone, or, I'm sorry, I had it backwards, or, or the one per four hundred. The current design has the proper number of spaces to comply with the one space per two hundred and fifty square foot standard. The issue is going to be, and Brian will testify, it appears that at least a few of the spaces conflict with truck movements, so we want to have testimony on that. Continuing on. Item four. There is an issue regarding the location of the trash enclosure. I think we have this elsewhere in the letter. It probably shouldn't be under zoning because of the SDA signage. I believe that's all of the barriers we need. And then finally, other design waivers. Under Roman number three, we have sidewalk along the Oberlin Avenue South frontage, nuns in the area, twenty-five foot perimeter buffer, all street parking within twenty feet of Oberlin Avenue South, providing proposed tree trees along the south frontage. We do note that there are trees there already. And then finally, unless curb is proposed along all the pavement in the southwest parking area, a design waiver is required from providing on-site curbing throughout the parking lot. That's all the reviews, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Terry, on number four, road traffic enclosure. You meant to write trash enclosure. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What?
I believe that is correct, Mr. Herzl.
Okay, okay, so, thank you, Terry. And who's the attorney on this application?
Mr. Herzl, before we get into that, I just want to bring up a couple of things as well. I took a look at the ordinance on parking, and there is another leg to the parking ordinance in that the applicant also have one space for employee. I mean, it is the one for two fifty, the one for four hundred, but what the ordinance says is, or, one for each employee, whichever is greater. And I don't think we have architecturals. I haven't seen them for the building. They show the number of employees, and I think this has flexed me. So I wrote to the applicant to ask him to address that. There's also, there was a concern with the driveway on a curve. And then finally, I note that this building is sixty-five feet in height. The proposed elevation is seventy-five feet. Now, if it's ten feet over what's allowed, that triggers a D variance. I went over this with Mr. Vogt. That ten foot is listed as a parapet, but I, you know, I don't know about a ten-foot parapet. And I think the board has to review that to determine if you want a building that's seventy-five feet high, and if you want to consider a ten-foot-high parapet as appropriate. So I sent an email to the applicant and their team earlier today so that they can address these issues. I just wanted to bring that up at the outset, so they're mindful of that when they go through their testimony.
Okay, Mr. Jackson.
My recommendation, Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
I went over the issue with the parapet with John. I believe Mr. Flannery is going to be giving testimony on this application. Mr. Flannery is uniquely qualified, being a professional architect. I would like him to address the issue of the parapet height relative to how the Lakewood UDO defines building height.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jackson, one second.
Chairman, Mr. Jackson?
Hold on, the chair wants to address me.
No, I just want to say one thing. If it is a height variance, then it doesn't belong by our board. Is that correct?
Well, the board can grant a variance up to ten percent above the allowed height. Well, just under ten percent. So, you know, that would be six and a half feet above the sixty-five. So I guess that would take it to seven, just, you know, I forget if it would be, you know, seventy-one or seventy and eleven inches. I forget if you're allowed. But, you know, and the ordinance does define parapets as not counted toward the height, but I don't think the ordinance contemplated a ten-foot-high parapet wall. And that's a structure height, but Mr. Flannery can address that.
Okay.
Any flexibility. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you, Justin. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I don't want to interrupt anybody, but I need to step down for this application.
Oh, okay.
Mr., I apologize. I thought that was Brian trying to interrupt the chairman before, so. Mr. Flansbaum is going to step, step down.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, attorney of the applicant. We have answers for all these questions. I do have a couple witnesses. Just want to be clear on this parking issue. The ordinance, one for four hundred, for four hundred, is a section that has the language regarding, or, one for one employee. The section of the one for every two for two hundred and fifty does not have that same reference. So the board has told us personally, we can have been saying, one for four hundred. The board said they weren't happy. Before we cut the board, we had some conversations with the professionals, and we amended our plans. I'm slightly compliant with parking at the one for two fifty ordinance. In any manner, we have testified also that we would meet even the one for one person. If we can, we'll get to this in the testimony amendment. As far as the parapet, my understanding of parapets. Somebody start a mute. I don't know if it's you, Adam, but somebody needs to mute. Ally, can you mute everybody, maybe? That's.
Okay, now, now you kill it. Now you.
Is that better?
Okay, now you're okay. Continue.
As far as parapets go, their design feature, they don't go, as John indicated, they usually don't get counted towards the height of the building. They are to shadow, and you don't see the top, any mechanicals and stuff like that. But it's a design feature, and again, Brian will give some additional testimony on that. And we have Scott Kennel as well to address traffic concerns in the area. At this time, I would ask John if he could swear. I don't know if he wants to swear in both at the same time, or do them one at a time.
Mr. Flannery, Mr. Kennel, please raise your hand. Do you swear from testimony you'll give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Flannery as an expert in.
Yes, yes.
And Brian, I would just ask that you mark the exhibits as you, as we introduce them.
Just, Mr. Kennel wanted to address.
Scott Kennel, McDonough and Ray Associates, fourteen thirty-one Lakewood Road, Manasquan. Qualified as a traffic expert with over thirty-five years of experience.
Okay, thank you. Accept him. Yes, we do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now, Brian, up to you now.
Okay, well, first of all, exhibits were submitted as part of this application. I'll mark A one as the copy of sheet one twenty-three of the tax map, which shows where the property is. I think the board is probably very familiar with it. It's on Oberlin Avenue, south of Cedar Bridge Avenue. There's a couple of schools in the area, as well as the industrial uses there. And this is an existing site, which has an existing building, which has thirty-two thousand square feet of office space and eighty thousand square house space. An aerial exhibit was also shown, provided, we'll label that as A two, and that aerial.
Mr. Flannery, I'm sorry, there came labeled from line, so I do have A one as the tax map, A two as the layout plan, and A three as the aerial.
Okay, so, all right, so A three is the aerial. The aerial shows the existing building. It shows the, the school that's next to us with their parking and facilities in the back, and it shows some of the other industrial buildings in the area, as well as a little off to the side. There's a couple of schools. This, this one. And then the, A two is the site plan showing the turning movements and the proposed building with the total of three hundred and fifteen parking spaces. We also submitted, and since we're, I'm going to jump, as per John's comments, I'm going to jump to the, the relief on the building. We also submitted architecturals, and we have perspective renderings. And the perspective rendering, the building, show the parapet walls in the building, and the ten-foot parapet walls that are indicated, because there's two different parapet wall heights. The ten-foot parapet walls are related to the glass area of the building. And this is a very nice building. It's the kind of building that I think everybody will be proud to have in the industrial park. So if we can go through John's items in reverse order of what he did, the third one he indicated was the, the building height. So the Lakewood UDO develop, defines building height, the vertical dimension measured from the average elevation of the finished lock grade at the front of the building to the highest point of the roof deck. Now, it has for mansard roofs and other things, different things, but for this particular roof, it's that simple. It's from the outside grade to the highest point of the roof deck. And we comply with the ordinance. The parapets that are associated with that, and, you know, we're saying ten feet, if it was ten feet all around, maybe that would look appropriate. But additionally, when you look at ten feet on a sixty-five-foot-high building, that's fifteen percent. It certainly doesn't look out of character. I wouldn't change anything on the rendering that's there with respect to this building, because I think that's a beautiful feature. The walls have architectural features to make it really stand out and look good. So my professional opinion is, we comply with the ordinance. The parapet walls are allowed to exceed, which is what parapet walls are. Parapet walls are above the roof deck, and they hide the stuff on the roof, and they provide a nice facade to the building. So my testimony is it complies, it's appropriate, and I wouldn't change a thing with respect to that.
Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Stern.
So, Brian, can you kind of go to thirty thousand feet? The thing I'm not understanding is this is a stunningly beautiful building. It's probably one of those most beautiful buildings that would be built in Lakewood. But it's being put in a completely industrial warehouse area. It seems so out of context. I would love to see the building in the Cedar Bridge. It's just so discordant with everything else around it. What's the genesis of this? I mean, the owner's going to put his company there?
Yes.
It's the spec office building. What is this?
The officer is going to put his company there. He's going to take one of the floors of the building.
And he's going to try out to lease out the rest of them?
I, I'm very confident he's going to do better than try to lease out. He's going to lease the rest.
I believe the applicant already has three of the floors leased, each a company. One's himself, and then two other companies are each taking a floor. It's a very, it's a boutique building. It's beautiful. It's just so out of context to the neighborhood.
Well, maybe it'll start a trend. Buildings that'll come in will.
There we go, Brian. Always looking for.
Yeah, and Mr. Stern.
Brian.
All the warehouses are going to turn into office space afterwards. That's the next step.
It didn't make sense. Thank you. We're talking about a permitted use.
I'm not used to defending about having the building look too nice. It would be sort of like defending about providing too much parking. Not something I'm.
Well, that's the next topic, but yeah.
Don't go there.
Don't go there, yeah.
So we need, we need the parking.
Item two on John's list was with respect to the entrance at the curve, and we have Scott Kennel can testify on that.
Okay, but Brian, Brian, one second, please. How many entrances showing on this map? How many entrances do you have?
There's three entrances to the site.
Okay, Ally, could you point to them? One over there? Over there, and then you have one where it says Oberlin, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's right on the bend. That's, that's a little dangerous.
The applicant is amenable to either leaving it to your professional and checking the site distances during resolution compliance to see that we comply with HSTO regulations, or if the board wants to determine that particular entrance be right in and right out, the applicant is okay with that as well.
Okay. What's the one further down? All the way down? Is that another entrance? Ally, go more down, more. Is that a different property? Further, further?
The parking.
What's that entrance there?
That's somebody across the street. That's our property.
But that's not, that's not your property.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Showing on the map. Okay, Brian, please continue.
John's first item was with respect to parking. And fortunately, the applicant revised the plans to provide 1 for 250 square feet, because otherwise, there is two sections in the ordinance, in section 900 under the M1 zone, it says 1 for 400 square feet, or 1 per employee, whichever is greater. Section 8 of the ordinance says for office use, 1 for 250 square feet. This plan complies with 1 for 250 square feet, which is what the board's engineer said should be provided. So with providing 1 for 250 square feet, we comply with the most restrictive part of the ordinance that could be proposed. And if we talk about number of employees, the number of employees on a standard office and what's being anticipated here would be closer to that 1 for 400 square feet. On the each floor, which is roughly 10,000 square feet, we would expect approximately 30 employees per floor, times 4 would be 120, and we're providing more than that, so. Since we're providing 1 for 250, I don't think the number of employees is applicable, I think that's a section.
That's big offices, 30 employees for 10,000 square feet?
Yes, and the applicant is taking one of the floors, and that's what he has. You can see it's a beautiful office building, they're providing beautiful offices, and that's what's anticipated.
Okay.
Brian, is 1 for 250 another way of saying 4 per thousand?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's pretty good.
Yes, and that, the section 8 of the ordinance was recently revised at the request of the planning board and adopted by the township committee, that anywhere in Lakewood, in any of the zones where you have offices, general office, it'd be done at 1 for 250 or 4 per 1000, 4 per 1,000. So I think we're past those items, I'd like to get back to the particular application. As I indicated previously, the existing is 32,000 square feet of office and 80,000 square feet of
Warehouse.
Of warehouse, and we're proposing just under 100,000 square feet of new office building. The...
Any warehouse?
Well, the existing warehouse will stay, so we provided parking for the existing warehouse. We provided 35 in accordance with the ordinance. We provided parking for the existing office at 128, which is 1 for 250 square feet. And we've provided 152 parking spaces for the new office, which is 1 for 250 square feet. The one thing I'd like to point out on submission waivers is, one of the items listed was the county planning board. That county planning board's not required, we're not on a county road, and we're not doing an acre of impervious. We don't impact any county facilities, so my testimony is we're exempting, and we would during resolution compliance, provide proof of that to the township engineer. The other waivers that were requested, as Terry indicated, sufficient information is provided for the board and the professionals to review the plan.
Now, going back to the parking, what Terry brought up, you're parking by the loading dock, you show us that?
Parking by the loading dock is on the southeast side of the building. And the A2 that was submitted does show a turning movement for a truck. There's parking spaces that are on the southerly side of that, that if there was a truck in there, they'd have trouble getting in or out. We, again, what we'd like to do is provide that kind of detail to the board engineer as part of resolution compliance, and to the extent we convince him that there's not a conflict, we'd like it to remain as is. The alternative, if the board feels more comfortable, is we could designate those as employee spaces.
Brian, when you're saying a truck, what size truck are you talking about?
Tractor trailers.
A full-size, full-size truck?
Full-size truck, and the plan that it submitted does show that there is sufficient room for that truck to pull in, pull up, and back in without impacting the parking spaces as it gets down toward the end of the building. Depending on where the driver pulled, it might be close for some of these spaces, so I'm indicating if the board's not comfortable in letting the owner of the facility coordinate this so that the traffic works. In our opinion, we're providing more parking than actually.
Let me ask you a question. How much parking are you, if you go 1 for 250, how many parking spaces do you need, and how much are you providing?
The answer to both questions is 315. 315 are required, and 315 are provided at a parking ratio of 1 for 250 for the general office space.
Okay.
Can I ask that a different way?
Yeah.
The 315, are you building 315 parking stalls, or are you utilizing some of the existing parking stalls that are on-site currently?
The existing parking, there's a lot of existing parking on-site already. We're reconfiguring the parking and getting the building, so 315 is the existing parking plus some of the new parking.
You didn't answer the question, how many, you've got an existing parking lot, and now you're building a building that needs 315 parking stalls? How many new parking stalls are you building as part of this complex?
Well, the existing site has 326 parking spaces. So we're reconfiguring the parking spaces. This isn't like a vacant site that's sitting there, this is a virtually fully-developed site that's well overparked. The existing facility needs 163 parking spaces, and they have 326. So it's a site that's well overparked, and what this applicant is doing is putting a building in there to match the parking needs with the building to be provided.
Mr. Stern, I have put on the screen the existing conditions plan, which shows the site as it is before that new building is added.
My Google satellite view is wrong then. The Google satellite view has this area, I can't point to it, where your cursor is.
Yes. Yeah, the applicant, since that Google picture was taken, had expanded the parking.
Why?
Because he could, more parking is always a good thing?
No, I mean, he did it, you don't spend that kind of money to build a parking expansion of your parking lot without a reason. And now you say you want to build a building on top of that parking lot that you just expanded. So you're taking all of that parking that you just spent good money on, you're digging it up and putting a building on top of it.
And it's a by right application, and there's a property that's suited for this development, and we're building what's appropriate for the site.
I meant that you didn't answer the question, Brian.
I, he didn't call.
Why build a new parking lot? How many stalls did they build?
They're not building anything. I think what Brian's testifying, that even if he puts up a new building, according to ordinance, he has enough.
You feel, I understand, but my questioning is...
I understand Mr. Stern's question, and I don't have the... My assumption would be that they had a different...
Brian, this is Adam. I got a message, the previous parking lot was done for a previous owner, it had other plans, that didn't work out, and this applicant purchased the property.
Okay.
I understand Mr. Stern's question, it has a valid question, what was the reason for it, but it was a previous owner than us.
Okay, they had other plans that made them build all those parking spaces. Okay, Terry, you wanted to say something.
Previous owner who had plans to do something, then they ended up selling the building.
Okay, Terry, I'm giving the thought to that.
I just wanted to clarify a couple things in terms of Brian's testimony. Brian, the 315 that you're citing, that's the proposed facility in total, existing and proposed, that's the parking demand, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm not sure if I heard the testimony earlier. Did you answer John's question about the number of employees?
Yes, my answer on the number of employees is, by typical industry standards, for a building of this nature, there would be 30 employees per floor, times 4 floors is 120 employees. It's less than the parking that's required per section 8 of the ordinance.
All right. Does that satisfy you, John?
Because it was one of the criteria, I mean, Mr. Flannery is the architect, he's the one with the knowledge of that, I don't have it. That's his testimony, if the board accepts that. You know, I did some math, that's like 133 square feet per person. If you take 10,000 and divide it by 33, I guess if you figure in lobbies, bathrooms, hallways, conference rooms, I mean, the board will just have to determine if they accept Mr. Flannery's testimony on that. I think Mr. Stern thought that 4 per 1,000 was reasonable. So, you know, I don't know, I'm not an architect, I just put that out there so that they can address it.
Thank you.
So if I continue with my testimony, we're running on zoning. Item 1 under zoning indicates that both the warehouse and the general offices are permitted uses in the M1 zone. So it's a conforming use for the site. Item 2 on the report indicates the front yard setback, and we did get a determination from the Industrial Commission permitting the 50 foot, so we do not need a variance for that. The ordinance, it's the only place in the ordinance where they say 100 feet, unless the Industrial Commission says it's okay to have 50. The Industrial Commission went along with the 50-foot setback, so we're in compliance with that. The parking, we've gone over in detail, we comply with the parking. The most stringent ordinance provision says 315 parking spaces total, and with the existing and proposed parking per the plan, we have 315 and comply with that. The... As far as truck circulation, there was a plan prepared by the new owners, which shows the turning movements on the plan, to the extent it needs tweaking, so that RVE is satisfied with it. We would agree to do that as part of resolution compliance. Item 4 in the report talks about sidewalks toward the trash enclosure, and we would agree to, if the board acts favorably, to add sidewalks to allow pedestrian access to the trash enclosure.
Brian, where are we putting the trash enclosure, and how many do you have?
We have one trash enclosure in the eastern, the middle of easterly side of the site.
Is that enough for all the buildings, it's pretty big property?
Yes, it is. It's general office use, which doesn't generate trash at the same rate as some of the other ones do, and it's all private pickup, so if they have to pick it up every day, you know, if they get a user that throws out a lot of paper, or recycles a lot of paper, and they have to pick it up every day, the owner of the site will have to have it picked up every day.
My question is, if we don't need on both sides of the building, it's a very big building.
My professional opinion is that it's not needed, these are upscale type of offices. In the upscale type of offices, they have a cleaning crew that comes in, and the cleaning crew bags up the trash and recyclables, and on their way out, they put them where they belong, and they get used to knowing where it is, and it all works very smoothly.
Okay.
Continuing, the other thing I wanted to add, in addition to the pedestrian sidewalks that allow pedestrian access to there, I had Mr. Sable on the call. When I finish talking, he's going to ask about pedestrian access from Oberlin Avenue, and we would add the Sable sidewalk out to the Oberlin Avenue in order to provide access to the building, so that pedestrians have sidewalk and crosswalks to walk on in order to safely traverse the site. Speaking of sidewalks, one of the waivers that, or design waiver that's in the plan is for sidewalks along Oberlin. Obviously, we're indicating that we don't feel it's necessary. I've been at a lot of board meetings, and you guys feel differently at times. If the board says sidewalks, we'll add the sidewalks there. Item 5 on the report is with respect to signs, and we're not requesting any sign variances. The signs will comply with the ordinance. Item 6 says we should talk about the positive and negative criteria. This is a by right application, we really don't have to talk about positive and negative criteria. It's a use that's permitted by the ordinance, and we're providing facilities in accordance with the ordinance requirements. Design waivers in item 3 in Terry's report on page 5, the sidewalk along Oberlin Avenue, which I've indicated, and will be guided by the board's decision with respect to the sidewalk. The provision of a 25-foot perimeter buffer, this is an existing developed site, most of the perimeter is developed, and we're proposing a building in the front, which doesn't infringe on that perimeter, consistent with the existing site. Providing shade trees on Oberlin Avenue, and there are existing trees on Oberlin Avenue. We think that they satisfy it, if the board or the board engineer wants us to plant some trees, we'll plant some trees. Hopefully, we won't have to take any trees down in order to plant the trees. Terry's report does indicate that, it notes that trees already exist along the project frontage, and the last design waivers with respect to curb along the existing parking area, and we're respectfully requesting not to change it, the existing site works very well. The drainage there, a lot of times, you get the drainage rules, even the new drainage rules coming out, tend to encourage in areas where it works to let the water run off the pavement and into a vegetated area.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Terry, please move.
Yeah, Brian, did you address the height definition that Mr. Jackson brought up earlier, relative to the parapets?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
So continuing with the...
Brian, with the parapet, you're not, you don't have any rooms behind it, just strictly for decoration?
Yes. There's a flat roof behind it, and it's open to the sky.
Okay.
It's there for architectural feature to look nice, and if you look at the...
Part of your testimony is it won't be utilized to close up and use that as a room?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that could be a condition of approval.
Yes, well, the plan showed that if we were to use it and close it in and use that, we'd be creating a variance situation. So we're happy to have it as a condition of approval, but it's a unneeded condition, because the ordinance already says we can't do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Dave?
Yeah, I just have a quick, going back to the entrance and exits, would it be possible to move that one on the curve down about 200 feet? That would take it off the curve.
That would be on somebody else's property.
Your property doesn't run straight, along the property line straight?
Well, I'm assuming you're referring to the most easterly driveway, where we had indicated potentially making that right in and right out. And it looks like the entrances may be 50 feet from the property corner, and I don't think that's going to increase any of the site visibility, and I think...
It would bring it down, about 200, 220 feet. If you go up the other end of that parking lot.
Well, we have two other entrances in the parking lot, so when you're saying bring it down, I don't know what...
What about that parking lot in front?
We have an entrance... We have an entrance already in the parking lot in front, we have an entrance in the westerly corner.
Brian, could you show for the, on all the three entrances and the traffic circulation, how people coming in, show it to the board, explain it.
Well, the office users have... Well, the office users have the three options for entering the...
Ellie, could you put the plan back up? Please.
I'm sorry. I was trying to make Brian's screen bigger because...
Okay, just let's wait. Ellie, take your time.
I don't think I can, so...
Okay, we'll wait.
I made Brian the presenter, but I don't know what that did. I'll just bring my screen back up.
Thank you, Ellie.
Okay, so in the westerly corner of the site, we have an entrance, and...
Mr. Flannery, Mr. Flannery, direct your comments toward the screen on the computer, and maybe we could help you with the cursor, like describe it as you're looking at the screen, the one on the right, the left, or the middle. Turn around.
Looking at the screen.
One, two, and three. A, B, and C.
Okay. So if we look at on the screen where the cursor is now to the left, we'll call that A. That's the most westerly entrance, and that provides two-way access and egress from the parking lot for any of the employees. If you proceed easterly to the middle of the lot where the cursor is now, we'll call that entrance B. That's in the center of the site, also a two-way full movement exit that allows, again, another possibility for...
I just want to make sure we don't lower that. That's all.
Okay. So then proceeding more to the right along the plan is the final one, which we'll call entrance C, and that's the one that gets the truck traffic, and it also allows employees and vehicles or visitors in and out at that point as well. That's the one that we're suggesting if there's a concern for the board about site visibility, where we could suggest that either as part of resolution compliance, we provide details and maybe some limited clearing or something needs to be done to allow a full access there, or we just limit it to right in and right out. In this location, right in and right out there will not be an imposition. It'll work fine.
Yeah, where would the trucks go?
The...
What's the pattern of traffic over here? Trucks coming into the site, they're leaving, where are they going?
Well, the trucks would have to come in, and they would come in from Cedar Ridge Avenue, and then they could make a right turn into the site. They come out, and they make a right turn out of the site, and they follow Overland to New Hampshire Avenue. So you got county roads on each side of Overland, which allow easy circulation for trucks and S.
What about how far is it?
It's still a hidden driveway.
The trucks cannot...
It's still a hidden driveway.
Hello?
Yeah. Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, Dave says something to you.
It's still a hidden driveway.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know how it's going to be hidden because we're going to have the curbs there, and you're on a road where the other driveways, now, perhaps you're saying because it's on a curve, it's a hidden driveway, but if it's limited to right in and right out, any truck coming knows the site where they're coming to, and they're going to have to be coming from Cedar Bridge Avenue on Overland Avenue, and they make a right turn into the facility. When they leave, they pull out to that entrance, and there's plenty of visibility for someone only making a right. You don't have to cross any lanes of traffic. You don't have to do anything. You make a right at that area, and to the extent that there's vegetation blocking a site triangle, and site triangle easements were provided on the plan, and my opinion is that there is sufficient full access at that point. And Mr. Kennel is on the call as well.
Okay, Brian, trucks are not going to be using the other two entrances, right?
That is correct.
That's strictly for cars? And my personal opinion, I think you need a right in, right out, and it should also, by the end of the driveway, make it that they can't make a left turn. I don't know what you call it.
Traffic island.
A traffic island?
Yeah, it's what we decided.
If we do.
And what we would request, which would be typical of an entrance like this with respect to a traffic island, would be to have mountable curbs because the trucks that are doing this, if they hit the curb and ruin a tire, that's not a good thing. But if we have a mountable curb, it'll serve the same purpose, and I know some of the board members may say, well, somebody will then drive over it. People drive over the full-face curbs as well. It's a matter of getting responsible drivers, and I think the only drivers that we're concerned about, because any of the employees that work here are going to know if they want to go west to over, that they can go out. The only ones that are going to be restricted to this one entrance is the trucks, and the trucks are commercial drivers and...
Brian, I have a question for you.
Mr. Chairman.
Your testimony was that if you can't fit the trucks, you can have employees only. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So technically, if a tractor trailer comes to deliver something, they call the employee down, please move your truck. How does it work?
Well, no, the vehicles, the employees' vehicles are not in the way of the truck. It arises if there's a truck there and somebody wants to move their vehicle out of that space, and that's why by limiting it to employees, the employees will know the schedule of the trucks. The employees will know when it's appropriate or inappropriate to stay there, and they'll also have some flexibility in dealing with the deliveries so that the very few spaces would have employees that are commenting.
Should the board approve it? Should the board approve it? I would need signage that designate this area just for employees. Should the board?
No, Mr. Chairman. But again, I just want to make sure it's clear. Our testimony is we believe the turning movements work as it is. Brian just offering that in the event the engineer's office wants something more, we're saying that it'll be for employee parking, and we'll agree at this time to make that employee parking and for signage, and for the main entrance for the trucks, the only entrance for the trucks, to be right in and right out only.
Ellie, can you give me a screen sharing for a second? I want to put Google Earth up on here so the board can see.
Mr. Stern, did you want to say something?
John, if we're going to put something on the screen, if we can disqualify the site and the data, please.
Yeah, sure. I just want them to see where this is in relationship to Cedar Bridge and New Hampshire. It looks like it's right in the middle of it to me, and that's really the purpose for this. I don't think any of that's changed. I think your driveways are all where they indicated. Are we sharing?
Yeah, I see.
Okay, so Mr. Flannery, this is, these driveways are all in their current locations, right? Where you proposed them?
Yes.
So just so you get an idea, this is New Hampshire right out here, right? So if a truck made a right out, they would have to go to...
Cedar Bridge.
So you make a right out, you go to Cedar Bridge. That's not too far away.
Yeah. I flipped them around when I talked about it, but Cedar Bridge in New Hampshire, you come in one way, you go out the other way.
All right. So this driveway over here, is that the truck one or is it the one on the right side as you're looking at this?
One on the right side.
Okay. So if a truck wanted to go left on New Hampshire out toward Route 70 or whatever, it'd have to go down to Cedar Bridge, go out to the intersection at New Hampshire, and then go left, right?
Yes. All signalized intersection.
So that's not, I don't know, that's not that difficult of a diversion.
Yeah, I think that works because they all have signals.
Right.
Truck can make that turn.
We're not diverting traffic through residential or making them drive long distances out of the way. It all works very easily.
What is the speed limit is on Overland right here?
I can assume it's something in the vicinity of 35. Scott Kennel may know that better.
Okay. Okay, Brian, do you have any other testimony?
Some of the rest of the comments in the report, we would comply with the recommendations, and we would satisfy Terry doing resolution compliance with, you know, respect to the, on a building of this site, even though it's a by right application, I'd like to testify with respect to the master plan of 2017, the division statement. It says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. And this is certainly utilizing a site, providing a rateable that's going to be welcome in the township. The municipal land use law, NJ SA 40,55 D2, under the purpose of the act, says encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in a state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And this does that. It says to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, and commercial uses. And again, this does that. That is my testimony, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, Chairman, is Terry?
Yeah, Terry.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on one part of Brian's testimony, talking about modifying the entrance right in, right out. Brian recommended a mountable island. We agree with that recommendation, the other reason being that you don't want to hamper township emergency vehicles, specifically fire, from having to jump the island.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yeah. Mr. Stern?
Yeah. Brian, on page six, number two, says the revised plans propose additional off-street parking throughout the site. What, where's the off-street parking? Why do we need it?
All of the parking is off-street parking.
Oh, okay. So when it's on the street, it's, that's called on-street. What is that called? I'm sorry.
If it's on the street, it's called on-street parking, and we don't get to count it.
Got it. Okay, so this one, it says off-street, it means on-site.
That's correct.
Okay. Second question is, I see a pool and a playground in the back left of the warehouse building. What's that?
That is for the adjoining school.
Or is it part of the Lakewood Hater?
Okay, so 475 Overland is not, does not have a school.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the school is at 725 Vassar, and it's the Lakewood Hater.
Okay. So Terry, I guess I'm going to ask you, I mean, it sounds like this complies. It just looks a little squishy to me as far as the parking. Are you confident that we're going to have plenty of room for parking for all of these uses? And if we don't, where are those people going?
Well, I am confident, Bruce, that they have the total number based upon the more restrictive one per 250-square-foot number requirement. Our concern was based upon what the current site plans show, the site plan circulation template show, that there's a handful of parking spaces on the periphery, on the loading area, the right side of the site, that they appear to go against. We're going to work with the applicant's engineers during compliance to either resolve those conflicts outright, best case, or worst case, they're going to agree on scheduling such that use of those spaces is not going to conflict with truck movements.
You're saying those parking stalls are not there now? We're saying we're going to be adding those as part of the total?
That's my understanding, and they show to be on the edge of some of the truck template movements that are depicted on the current site design. Now, you know, in defense of the applicant's engineer, they may be fine-tuning that between now and final compliance. Brian feels that they can eliminate the conflicts outright. The backup position would be, as they agreed to, that they're going to coordinate the employee use of those spaces if necessary during truck traffic.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Dave.
Just a question. If this is an office building, why are 18-wheelers coming in?
Because there's a warehouse there also.
It's two uses, David.
There's two uses.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a question for Terry. Should they make the warehouse office space? Then the parking calculation goes up, right?
I'm looking at Scott Kennel shaking his head affirmatively. I'm going to rely on Scott's preliminary opinion. I'm going to assume yes.
The answer is we cannot convert the warehouse to office because it does...
Basically, should we approve it? It's the way the building is right now with the offices and warehouse space. We're not converting any warehouse space for more offices. Is that correct, Brian?
That is correct.
Okay.
So through the chair. I'm now understanding this a little bit better. So Terry, those parking spots, kind of that L in the lower right-hand corner, so that means to get the ratio that we need for the new shiny four-story office building, people are going to be walking from those parking stalls on the lower right to the office building. Is that correct?
Well, that would not be my testimony, Bruce, because we have the existing building that already needs parking, so the people in the existing building can park in those parking spaces, and the people in the shiny office building, they have plenty of parking up front.
I see Scott wants to give some testimony already.
I guess I would be concerned if we're having the office people, or especially a visitor, can't find a spot. They go park in the lower right-hand corner, there's no sidewalk, and they're playing a game of chicken with an 18-wheeler, and I think they're going to lose.
A question for the applicant's professionals. Can you add some crosswalks and signage to improve the pedestrian access on this property?
Yes, we would agree with, we would work with your office, Terry, during resolution compliance to put as much as needed.
I think Brian referred to them as the Sable sidewalks.
Yes.
Sable sidewalks. I think we should hear some testimony from Mr. Kennel. Could you unmute?
Scott, if you can, you would have been sworn in or you've been accepted as an expert.
Right, yes.
Through what you've heard and anything you need.
Yes, I guess I would first talk about the parking. Again, it's my opinion that the parking is well distributed throughout the site.
A little louder, Scott, or at least I can't hear him.
In my opinion, the parking on this site is well distributed where you have, I'm going to say, close to 200 parking spaces on the west side of the building, or I'll consider the front of the building, along Overland, where we determined that the office building requires 120 parking spaces. And then, again, we have almost 200 spaces in front. The, and then just for the board's benefit, on the south side of the block, that's where the existing office is. So they're going to utilize all those parking spaces along the south side, that long bend.
Got it.
So they're not going to be competing with one another. So the office, that's the other good thing with the site. The office uses are separated from one another, and they're not going to be competing for the same parking spaces. And again, as stated earlier, the four per thousand is an industry standard, and it's my opinion that the four per thousand is appropriate and will be adequate to support the parking needs. As it relates to, we were talking about the access, what I would suggest in addition to considering the right in, right out, is that working with...
Mr. Kennel, do you feel the right in, right out is the right thing to go, the right thing to do?
I feel that's appropriate, given the roadway network we have. Again, the truck activity is much lower than the vehicle, the passenger vehicle activity, so it would be appropriate. But I think what we should also consider, and we can work with Terry's office, I think there's an opportunity, because over time, there has been vegetation and tree growth along the Overland Avenue curveline that can be selectively trimmed and some of it removed to optimize the sightlines along that location.
Are there any wetlands over there?
Wetlands are beyond the property frontage.
So everything could, it could be removed over there?
Along our frontage, there's an opportunity, and that would enhance the sightlines at that driveway.
Okay.
So through the chair.
Yeah, Mr. Stern.
So LSTA... So, so LSTA does not have designated parking? That parking lot in gets the upper left-hand corner. That's free for all? Everybody gets to use it?
That's my, that's my understanding, but again, that's going to be a site management issue, depending on, on the tenants and the, and the, and the users.
Okay. And then my Google says this, the building next was called Going Decor, the Home Improvement Store. Does that mean people can go there and buy stuff? Is it a quasi-retail?
I, I don't know. I'm not aware of that, what that user is.
It is a retail. I was there.
Okay. So are the requirements for parking for retail different than warehouse?
They are as far as I understand, but then again, there's occasions where you have tile stores or things of that nature where it is a warehouse operation, but you have limited retail activity. I can't qualify how much retail activity I have, but it's not, it's not going to be the retail activity you see at a convenience store or something of a higher turnover.
Do you feel, how would you characterize it?
And I, I think he's correct. It's like a tile store. It's not a supermarket that you have cars coming and going all the time. It's a plumbing supply or a tile store, but you have, you know, you have some workers come and go, but it's mainly a warehouse.
And limited retail?
Limited retail. I, I have been to the site a few times. That's what I would look at it. That's what it looks to me. Mr. Stern? I would like to hear the board's opinion about sidewalks around the property. I think in the past, we, we asked offer sidewalks, offer meandering path from asphalt. Do you have an opinion about that, Mr. Stern?
I, I'm the parking guy. We need to have Mr. Sable to chime in.
Okay.
Mr. Sable joining.
Mr. Sable, okay. What's your opinion?
We need sidewalk.
Okay. Who else is on? Levy, are you there?
No, that's just, Heiberg just, he just, he just blew my mind. I wasn't expecting him to say that.
What do you think?
The only thing that I, that I see that I want, I know we had an application previously, we had a right in, right out where the triangle, forced traffic to the right, was reinforced with ballisters or those like concrete, so that it would, it would really.
And Levy, I think the testimony from the applicant was that it has to be a mountable curb, that any white trucks can go on the curb. And if we put the, the, any, any concrete over there, he won't be able to make that turn.
They can't make the entrance wider?
Where's the applicant?
So I think the question is, is there anything you could do to, to really force the trucks to make a right, so that they would have to, you know, do a maneuver that would not be natural with some kind of improvement? You know, with, I don't know if it would be curving or, or just the way you shape the intersection. Mr. Flannery or Mr. Vogt, do you know of any kind of technique where you can make sure people turn the way they're supposed to by the way it's laid out?
Well, again, my, if I could speak, John, the first of all, a physical island is one that encourages the proper traffic movement. You can also put a, put signs of no left turns and do Title 39. So I mean, there's other means to do that.
Scott, Scott, this is liquid. Signs don't help.
But, but we're looking at truck drivers who have CDL licenses, that if they lose that, they lose their job. I, I don't think we're, we're looking at the employees or passenger vehicles because they have an option to go out. We're looking at the trucks and I, I think the trucks in this particular case, if we have no left turn signs, will be responsible.
My question is though, is there any way to put a hardscape improvement into the ground that would kind of really encourage it, more so than a sign, so that you'd have to?
Yeah, I mean, Brian, it's, it's a school neighborhood, there's a school right across the street. I, I would, I would, I would want to reinforce that as much as possible.
I guess that's for, I guess that question is for Terry. Terry, is there any kind of improvement that could be put into the, into the curbing or the way the, the, the road, the roadway is shaped? So it'd be more difficult to make the? My favorite improvement, and I'm saying this only half jokingly, is to have somebody write a few tickets. In my experience, that's the best human behavior modification. What you have to do here, you have to balance accessibility. I agree with what Brian said, you know, the truckers that are going to be using this, they don't want to damage their vehicles. You know, I don't think they're going to be the problem. I, I think if you have a problem, it's going to be employees and regular cars. And if there's a problem, it's going to have to be enforced.
Okay. And we are, we are agreeing to do the mountable curbing in that area, and if we can raise the center of the mountable curb, we'll do that as well.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions for any of the professionals? Okay. Let's see, now, before we open the public, I just, Mr. Isaacson, Walden, but you didn't answer. What, what's your opinion about sidewalks?
I always like sidewalks.
Okay. Mr. Garfield, who else is there?
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. Mr., Mr. Meyer?
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. And who else? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is agreeing to walk wherever the board wants, meandering paths, walking paths, sidewalks. We have no objection.
Okay, so, okay, no problem. So I would open up to the public at this time. Ally and Mr. Jackson, do we have anybody from the public?
I did receive one letter from an attorney originally asking this application to be carried from the last public hearing. He did, for the record, submit a letter officially withdrawing their objection to the application at this time, so I do not have anything from the public. I do not have any new emails, so I would just recommend that you confirm there's no online waiting.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, you don't have any emails either? Is that correct?
You're muted, John.
I'm checking my emails right now. I don't see any. Okay, so I will, is there anybody? There's nobody on. Who's, is anybody logged in, calling? I see one, 7324. Who's that?
Oh, that's time of running.
Okay, no problem. So I will close it to the public and I would ask for a motion on this application.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion on this application.
Okay. Mr. Meyer?
Like to make a motion to approve this application with the proper sidewalks, the signage, and right in, right out on the, on the far end entrance.
And, and the parking by the loading dock should be for employee only? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Motion, we have two seconds. Mr. Stern and Mr. Garfield, roll call please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Renner has left. Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
And Mr. Fuentes?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion approved. Ally, at this time, I would like to go to the correspondence. I don't know how long Mr. Fuentes wants to stay.
Agreed. Let me just pull up the plans that were submitted.
And Heiberg Sable is joining the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. All right, this is a correspondence request from Congregation LUTS, modify a previously approved building addition.
Okay. Terry, do you have any, do you want to go through a report? Do you have anything to add?
We don't have any, anything new, Chairman. We've looked at the requests and we've had a discussion with the applicant as well as staff. As the board may recall, there was an approval for this application. I believe we signed off compliance in, in 2020, if I'm not mistaken. What they want to do, as I understand it, is a slight exceedance of the township, the township requirement that a site plan is required if you add more than 50 under square feet of the, the building. It's my understanding that the applicant does not want to do a formal new or a formal amended application, since they've gone through compliance already. In, in looking at the requests, you're going to have minor changes, in my opinion, to things like circulation, grading, drainage, that if the board is comfortable, I believe that we could handle it internally under an amended compliance procedure.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I took a look at this and, and the question was whether this could be reviewed more or less administratively by the board, although it is with notice to the neighbors. So the, the only thing that we're missing is the formality and the fees associated with the site plan application. So this was on notice. The applicant had an approval, the building would have been a certain size plus 1,500 square feet. The addition they want in the back, as I understand it, is, is, would be the same square footage as they were approved for with the 1,500 square feet that they're entitled to. So, you know, the, the, the question is whether, you know, they have to pay the fees and the reviews and everything, or if this is a relatively nominal change that the board could do in this format. And I stress that, I, I do think that this is a material change, but since there's notice, I don't think there is anything wrong with doing it in this format.
And Mr. Jackson, I want to add to it. Terry just testified that drainage, circulation, and parking, there's no, basically no changes, or if there's any, it's minor, and he could address it, and it could be done. So I, if there's no major changes to the plan, I think, in my personal opinion, we can listen to it. As long as Terry feels comfortable, if there's any issues, that it can be taken care of. Okay. Who's the attorney on this application? Or the engineer?
Morning. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Feffer. On behalf of the applicant, and I have Glenn Lyons here to address the technical comments. I think both Terry and, and John described the request pretty straightforward. At this time, I'll just ask Glenn to be sworn in and he can just address any of the technical items.
Mr. Lyons, you swear for testimony before you told the truth?
I do.
Okay, we'll accept. Mr. Lyons, please, please proceed.
Okay. Quick, quick application. When we were in the last time.
Sorry, let me just, Mr. Lyons, let me just clarify. Stepping down on this application are Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Plantzbaum. We do have sitting on this application, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Herzl, Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Sable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Okay, please proceed.
When this was approved by the board, a year or two ago, there were, there was an addition that was being built on the front of the building. The scope of that addition was reduced and part of the existing building was also removed at that time. So basically, we, what we were approved to do, they built 697 square feet less than what was approved under the approved site plan. Well, doing that, what we'd like to do now is build 2,197, oh no, I'm sorry. Build a 2,192 square foot addition, which is 1,500 square feet plus the 697. So we're, we're at five square feet less than what would have been permitted.
What's with the parking?
We're going to have to re-stripe one of the handicap parking spaces. If you look at the plan.
How many, how many parking spaces do you have in total?
Oh, I, there's.
I see, 21?
We, we require 27, but if you've ever been to the site, there, there was a very large parking area where it says gravel and dirt parking area.
You have 27?
Oh, we have, we have, we probably had close to 100 parking spaces.
No, but I, I see, right now you have 25, right? You have four, 15, and six. You have 25.
Correct.
Okay. On the worst-case scenario, you have two over there. So basically, you're totally conforming with the parking.
Correct.
Okay, even on the new size?
Even on the new size, we would still.
And, and that parking lot you approved already for?
We were approved for everything that's on the plan.
Okay. And the septic, is that anything moving? Anything's changing or nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Really just changing the way the addition?
You're just changing the configuration of the addition, but basically you have ample parking and everything stays the same as before? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions from any board members?
Mr. Chairman, time table.
Yes.
I'm look, I'm looking for a, a plan that shows the sidewalk around the building. I know you proved it before, but I think there was some sort of sidewalk initially on that space. Want to make sure this is the normal continuation. I'm looking at the hard copy paper they gave us. I can't find it. Maybe Ally has to bring it up.
I have on the screen the originally approved plan. I don't see any sidewalk.
With the sidewalk that's shown on that plan, that was for our handicap access to the, to the building. That's, that's still on the, where Ally's pointing at now.
Oh, there are two, I'm sorry, there are two in the front.
Right, two paved.
Exactly.
Where is the main entrance to the building?
On New Egypt. And yeah, main entrance is in the, in the front of the building.
Yeah, on, on, on the site plan, Ally had a previously, there was also what appeared to be diagonal sidewalk from the parking area. I think that was provided. It looks like it was access to a handicap ramp.
Yeah.
So you, you have several points of pedestrian access. Mr. Sable, if you want more, that could be incorporated into the approval of the amended concept that we would re, review in compliance.
I, I think the only thing is the, the main parking lot, we have 15 and six, that's just somehow connected to the walkway for people walking into the building. Is that what, is that what you're saying, Mr. Sable?
Yeah, and I guess that's.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes, Terry.
Just looking at this, I'm, I'm looking at the plan, and Glenn can correct me if I'm wrong. Where you show those six spaces, you have Belgian block curb labeled, it may be possible to run sidewalk behind that curb.
Yes. Necessary, we can, we can put a walkway in from the rear.
And you could actually almost connect to what's shown as an existing walk on the top end of your property. Appears to be a walk shown to an adjoining structure.
And the back is six-foot-high fence.
Okay, so you wouldn't worry. That, that's fine. But, but you could definitely put some form of sidewalk, even if it's an asphalt path, be behind that Belgian block curb.
Where is the main entrance to the park?
We'll provide, we'll provide an access to those 21 parking spaces on the, on the left side of the buildings. I think it's really the concern is that there's no paved walkway from the 21 spaces on the left side of the building. To the front of the building or to the rear. I, I don't want to bring people in the back door if that's not appropriate. I think most of the access is from the front of the building, so we may need to put a dry, a sidewalk along the Belgian block curb and over to that other paved walkway. along the Belgian block curb and over to that other paved walkway.
Okay.
I think today is a very good example of sidewalks because of all this snow and mud. If there isn't a normal pathway, a normal concrete, or at least asphalt, it just becomes a huge mess. I think it's important to have from parking lot to a building, front and back at least.
I agree.
I would like to see something, if Terry could take note of it.
Okay, Mr. Lyons, you agreed to put it in, right?
Yes, first.
Okay, and you feel it's workable? Any other questions for any board members?
What was the final on the front? For the sidewalk, I don't remember if we voted yes, sidewalk, not sidewalk. I think it was four feet in, something we had a discussion initially. Anybody remembers?
I don't recall, but this is the plan that was reviewed and approved by Terry and then signed, and this plan is not showing.
I remember there was some sort of discussion about it. I'm not sure what we ended up having.
Is Whitehall Lakewood, is that a county road, Glenn?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
All right, so you don't have curbing, which means by county policy, well, technically, they would make you want to put it outside of the future carriageway. But even if you held the existing carriageway, in the absence of curbing, it would have to be at least ten feet off the carriageway, which means that it may conflict with those trees.
Most likely.
And I think sidewalk is more important than trees, in my opinion. But. Pfeffer, you disagree?
No, I think sidewalk is more important. Safety comes before trees over there.
I know we can discuss. This is really the last party in Lakewood. There's one house next door, and then you're into Jackson. So.
Lakewood, New Egypt is a busy street.
Yes, and there are sidewalks to the east of this, coming in from Cory Court.
Okay.
To the chair?
Yes, Mr. Stern.
So, if somebody can tell me, what is the current approved? Like, what is the current square footage? And what will be the new total square footage? What's the before and after?
Fifteen hundred square foot addition. Glenn, do you have the exact number?
I want the total before and the total after.
Mr., I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, we didn't put that on this plan. I just know, in total, it's a fifteen hundred square foot increase over what was previously approved.
I'm just looking, it looks fifty-two hundred and forty-five hundred. Where I come from, that's about ten thousand. So we're adding fifteen hundred square foot to the existing fifteen, ten thousand square foot building. Is that approximately right?
Probably, yeah, probably approximately.
Okay, so my concern is not so much the precedent we're beginning to set. If I recall, about, I don't know, six to eight weeks ago, we had about, I don't know, about an hour and a half, maybe even two hours on a letter, piece of correspondence that came in. We didn't have the facts, and we didn't have that, and we had a big. I just, I don't like this idea that we can sneak things in on, don't use any pejorative terms.
That's all right. We're not sneaking anything. Bruce, with all due respect, we submitted.
Adam, hold on a second. Mr. Stern?
The board has a process.
Stern, Mr. Pfeffer, hold on a second. Mr. Stern, the context of this is that they're entitled to put a fifteen hundred square foot addition onto the building without board approval that's exempt. Anybody with a shul could go and add fifteen hundred square feet onto it, as long as it doesn't trigger any variances. So what the issue with this one was.
Mr. Jackson, it's the zoning officer has to sign that off, not the board.
Yeah, right, it doesn't go to the board, it just.
It's also zoning officer to make sure.
You know, by an analogy, if you, your house met the setbacks, and you wanted to add a sunroom onto the back of it or a deck onto it, you just go get a. So that's the fifteen hundred square feet of this. What they did is they got an approval, and from their approval, they did not build approximately three hundred square feet of that approval. So what they wanted to do, they said, well, since we didn't build that approximate three hundred square feet, we want to add eighteen hundred square feet in the back instead of seventeen hundred square feet. Technically, they're not entitled to it, but had they added the three hundred feet on and only built fifteen hundred feet, they'd be okay. So I saw this as a net equivalent of what they were approved by the board, or what they approved by the board plus what they're entitled to do by law. So the sequence would have been, they could have built, you know, the full building, and then add on the fifteen hundred feet. Since they had, you know, a spare two, three hundred square feet, I thought that the board could, if the board chose to do so in its discretion, do this in this format with notice to the neighbors. If it didn't change drainage, if it didn't change parking, if it didn't change, you know, the way site circulation, et cetera. Mr. Vog indicated he does not believe that it does. So what my thought was, that they're winding up with the same square footage that they were essentially entitled to. They just reconfigured it a little. And I thought that was, you know, something that the board might want to allow to be done in this format.
But we just determined that they're adding fifteen hundred square feet net.
Yeah, well, it's a little more than that. But they're entitled to add the fifteen hundred square feet.
But for my education, what would prevent them coming back in six months and adding another fifteen hundred square feet?
And I know this. They have a creeping subdivision type of policy, but I don't think they can add more than fifteen hundred feet beyond an approved plan. Maybe Ms. Morris can.
Yeah, but Mr. Jackson, I don't think the zoning officer would sign it off. You don't have parking for it. Then you trigger a variance, you have to come to a board.
Right.
Right now, we're totally conforming. They have enough parking for the property, so zoning officer can sign it off. I think if you trigger a variance, you have to come to a board. Is that correct?
Bruce, to answer your question, first off, unfortunately, these exemptions don't go to the zoning officer. She won't review them, so I review. As far as I know, there is nothing that limits the number of fifteen hundred square foot additions you could come in for, one after the other, assuming that none of those additions trigger any type of variance with respect to lot coverage or parking needed or setback. So if they're all conforming, and there's enough paved parking on site, yes, theoretically, they could get fifteen hundred square feet approved, and then come back next year and get fifteen hundred square feet approved.
So it's not a.
It's not a what?
Completely unfounded concern.
Yeah, but it has to be.
But it is permitted. And on a site like this, I imagine they would hit a parking issue before they were able to put in another fifteen hundred square feet, because the parking is based on the base medrush area. So for them to increase the size of everything else on site, but leave the base medrush the size that it is, that wouldn't really accomplish much for the shul.
They would, they would, accordingly, extra rooms, extra small bed medrush, a study, a.
Unfortunately, working within the constraints of the ordinance, they would be permitted to do additional fifteen hundred square foot additions, yeah.
And I want to go back to Mr. Stern. I'm going to answer the question you had initially. You asked, how much was the original approval, and how much they're asking now? The original was six ninety-seven, six hundred and ninety-seven square feet, and they, I guess, automatically added fifteen hundred, and they're coming back in front of the board, which I guess they're entitled to. And your question, if coming back another fifteen hundred soon is potentially, it is. And therefore, at least as far as circulation, I would love to see normal siding, sidewalk, and to see how that works, that timetable. I would like to see that, before I give my.
This is one of the busiest minion factories in Lakewood, and that's a wonderful thing. But, you know, I know for a fact during times are people lined up on New Egypt Road waiting to turn left across the yellow lines to get in here, and the traffic backs up a lot.
Yeah, I can just bring it back in a little bit. Here for seventeen ninety-nine square foot addition. We had a previous addition that was approved of the complete addition that we were entitled to. Looking to add the seventeen ninety-nine square feet. The board had some concerns about some walkways and some curbing and some walkways and sidewalks, I'm sorry. And Glenn has indicated he could work with Terry to figure out the best locations for those. We have no objection to that. And, you know, I know what more we could do here. Straightforward as it could be, outside stuff talking about correspondence, first cut application. This is everything. We're here before you tonight, this is the application. It's legal, it's correct, it's right. We're not asking for anything, any variances. And I would just ask that the board approve it with the condition that we work with Terry to do the walking paths and the sidewalks.
So Adam, your other choice is to build the three hundred originally, and then go under the zoning officer for less than fifteen hundred. Build it in two steps.
Games, you know.
I know, I know.
Forward.
Yeah, okay, I'm just playing.
But unfortunately, you know, the, it's not playing, and it's real.
To your credit.
It needs this square footage.
To your credit, Mr. Pfeffer, I think that, and I asked that to Terry, you're not asking for any variance, you're not creating any new variances. You're giving enough parking. It may be, whatever was approved was approved, but you're not asking for any new variances or anything. You're giving enough parking, so. Technically, if you'd come for full board, you would get it approved, because it's basically by right.
Correct.
Okay.
But we'd like to see how the circulation works. Now we don't. And I think it's pretty important on a shul of this matter, of the amount of people that gets here, we'll be able to see before we approve. That's the only thing that we have, I think, as I have, I think Mr. Stern is concerned for that also.
Yeah, Adam, this is not.
See, it's a seventeen ninety-nine square foot addition. It's the same thing you've seen last time.
And it's not working until now, we try to make it a little better.
And it's getting fifteen percent bigger.
Right. We're not asking for a lot, I think, we're working along, and we want to get it done.
And Mr. Sable, we're in agreement. Should the board approve it, that Glenn will work with Terry in his office to make sure that it meets Terry's requirement.
Yeah, not Terry, and not Glenn, David and his shul, and they don't know what's going on. And I think it's important to see how it works, because in the past, most applications is not.
Be there one per.
If he blows this, this shul creates a graphic mess. I'm going to vote for this with a full heart, but I'm just telling you and the other professionals, I'm just speaking for me. But we don't want correspondence to be the new method of getting things in without thorough vetting. And that's not an accusation. Maybe I was just traumatized so much by that last one where we spent an hour and a half of the board's time on a stupid piece of correspondence, and we never resolved it. So let's not make this the new method of getting things in without thorough vetting.
Okay, I agree. Terry, do you feel comfortable that you could work out a circulation plan with Mr. Lyons? I think he's engineering it.
Due to the amount of relatively minor additions, yes. I mean, it's not going to reinvent the wheel. I don't think you're looking at anything major other than the pedestrian accesses that we've discussed here.
Okay, you heard the board loud and clear, they would like walkways around the building to connect all the parking lots to the building. The people shouldn't have to walk.
All right, I just have one question, Chairman, so I'm clear. We had discussion back and forth relative to put the sidewalk on the frontage. I expressed a concern that to put that in, you're going to have to be more than ten feet away from the county carriageway at a minimum. Does the board want the engineer to explore that, even if it means taking out trees? You can do, but like I said, the county is very strict with regard to sidewalk along county roads that do not have curbing.
My personal opinion, safety comes before trees.
All right, so you would direct the engineer.
I, we have to hear what the board says, I'm just one vote, but.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion.
I would go along with the chairman.
Okay. Any other questions from any board members? Seeing none, there was nobody from the public, right, Ally? Close the republic, is that correct?
I did not have anyone from the public, no.
Okay, so I'm closing it to the public, and I would ask for a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion. Hime say will make a motion to approve this with the normal, full circulation sidewalk from the parking lot, from the main entrance on the street, as much as possible. I don't see it, and I'm confused, and it doesn't make me happy.
But Terry, shaking, said that he will review it, make sure that it works.
And we have to discuss, what happened with the sidewalk in the front? What was the final decision?
What's your motion? I said my opinion, what's your motion?
My question, Terry, I'll ask the question again. Can we put asphalt without curving? Maybe two feet in, three feet into the park, into the lot?
My experience dealing with the county Hime is that they do not want the liability of any pedestrian access along uncurbed carriageway. You know, I can't speak for them, but I would be surprised if they would want anything within ten feet. I'm going to defer to Mr. Flannery and Mr. Lyons, who were part of the meeting. They deal with Ocean County more than I do on the private side. That's my understanding. They're pretty hard and fast in terms of a separation in the absence of curb.
So, Mr. Flannery? Mr. Flannery? Mr. Flannery?
He's on mute.
Okay, Mr. Flannery, is it possible to put sidewalks or a meandering path on your property?
My experience is what Terry indicated, that the county would want at ten feet from the carriageway.
And if you do it ten feet away, is that possible?
If it's on your property, you're okay.
Okay, are you losing any parking spaces by making that?
No, you'd be losing trees.
Okay, I don't care about this, Bruce.
At ten or more feet, we would be on our property. If we go twelve or thirteen feet, we may be able to avoid the trees. So we could do it on our property, yes.
You can certainly look at.
We're agreeing to do it, we just have Terry and Glenn meet on site, figure out if we could save a tree, great. If we don't have to save a tree, if we can't save a tree, we won't. But we're agreeing, if we could do the path asphalt, great. Again, presidential compliance.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion.
Yeah, can I join the meeting on site, please? Would you be okay to invite me, be so kind? Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to approve this based on the sidewalk we discussed, and based on the meeting, we're going to have, try to put that asphalt ten feet into the property.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Hey, Mr. Garfield, second, roll call.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to number three.
We're going to go back to.
Public hearing, number three.
Yes, public hearing, item number three, SB 2401 AA, made by Jackson Office Complex LLC. This is a request for a site plan exemption for an office built. The reason for the applicant's request for exemption rather than a full site plan is that most of the site, and in fact, all of the building, is located within Jackson Township and will be the site plan from then. The board does have the ability, I believe, under our ordinance to grant an exemption under circumstances that they find appropriate. I will let Mr. Jackson answer any questions you have on that, or let the applicant's professionals provide the testimony as to how you can do an exemption rather than a site plan on this site.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, let's turn with you first. As far as I recall, I voted on this plan originally. It looks familiar, this plan.
Yeah, Ms. Morris, based on our, you know, discussions and preparing for the meeting, meaning me and you and Ms. Morris, you were.
meaning me and you and Ms. Morris, you recalled this. Ms. Morris was able to get a resolution, I think it was from 2006. I gave it to Mr. Pfeffer and he can, I think that they probably have their more properties and this application's different, but I'll let him make that representation. So I don't think they're pursuing that earlier application. The property is vacant and I think the parcels are different and what they're looking for now is completely different. So Mr. Pfeffer, if you could just.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Jackson, so it's a total new application.
That's my understanding. We'll have to hear the representation. And also, while this is site plan exempt, I think the board still has to pass on it. And, you know, the, the, the traffic does go into Lakewood and part of the parking lots in Lakewood, so I think they should address, you know, the number of users, hours, that kind of thing and determine how it'll impact traffic.
Okay, and Mr. Jackson, just for the record, could you explain to the board how it works? If we approve it conditionately and Jackson does want to approve it, they don't like what we approved, or we don't like what Jackson says, how, how does it work? Who goes first, who goes second, and how does it work?
Well, unless one town governing body agrees to delegate the decision to the other town, both towns have to approve. So they, it's kind of like getting county approval and planning board, but we need both. So I'm not aware of a compact between Lakewood and Jackson where this has been deferred to Jackson or vice versa. So my, my presumption is that the applicant would certainly need Jackson Township Planning Board approval or, you know, whatever the appropriate board is, and they would likewise need Lakewood approval.
Okay, so basically, for the Lakewood, it's just a few parking spaces. We're not approving the whole building. We're not approving the access ways, nothing. There's one access. It's just that small triangle on the left, is that correct?
You would be approving the, the, the structures and components that are in Lakewood Township. I don't know how it works with inspections and bonding and that kind of thing, but the, as far, but in so doing, I think it's the board's duty and prerogative to look at the entire site. Because you can't understand the parking, you cannot understand the circulation, you can't understand the impact on traffic unless you understand the rest of the site as well. So I think, you know, you can, you can take a look and bear in mind that likely the rest of it will have to be scrutinized by the Jackson Township Land Use Board as well.
And ultimately, we're only approving the, the parking on, on the left triangle, the bottom triangle.
Yes, yes.
Okay, clearing that up. Terry, would you like to go through the report, please?
Yes, Chairman. Everyone should have a copy of our December 28 review going on to page two of the review. No waivers are requested. The property fully complies with Lakewood B1 zoning requirements per our interpretation, including parking. We had just asked the applicant professionals, per review comment one, to testify as to the overall use, hours of operations, et cetera. The site improvements other than the one access drive and a small portion of the parking is going to be Lakewood Township. The rest of the improvements as indicated on the plan will be with the Jackson. We commented that the intensity of the state appears to trigger the major development per the stormwater rule. It will have to be designed accordingly, presumably reviewed in Jackson. That's where the stormwater facilities are going to be closed. And then a maintenance plan will have to be filed. Applicants should testify regarding anticipated traffic. We had a comment on the circulation plan that's self-explanatory. The access to the property is going to be subject to Ocean County review. We noted needsmen along the property frontage. And we just have a caveat in here that, you know, if the board feels it's necessary, we, we, we could review specific items of the approval if necessary in lieu of a full new application. And finally, our comment 12, the applicant is going to be required to get any and all outside data to see approvals. Other than getting testimony from the applicant's professionals, this one's pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Pfeffer, ten B F of the applicant. As indicated previously, a portion of this property had been before the board back in 2006. Actually, I believe it was actually, I think, the first application I ever handled before the board. It was for even less of an area in Lakewood than you're looking at today. A triangle piece we're referencing is much smaller. After that approval, the, the application, the project really just sat dormant. Recently, the applicant has acquired some additional lands and now we're coming back for this new application, which includes other parcels that were not included in that original application.
Mr. Pfeffer, if I recall, I think we gave you the approval, you went to Jackson, then you came back to us because Jackson didn't like something, the buffer or something?
Back in 2006, I was only given the, the, the task of handling the access to Lakewood and.
I think me and you are the only ones who were here since then.
Yeah, so I don't recall the full extent of that application, but it was approved.
I'm sure that Mr. Steve Pfeffer's thought process at that time was Adam couldn't mess even this up when it's just a triangle.
That is correct. I was told do not come back to work unless I get this approved, so. But in any matter, this is a totally new application, very similar. It's an office building. As, as Terry indicated, we're really just a small piece of some parking and the entrance, one of the entrance ways is in Lakewood proper. I have Brian Flannery here to address all the other, all the technical matters, but should this be approved, we still have to go to Jackson, get their approval and therefore review as well, in addition to the county approval as well. If we cancel, we're in Mr. Flannery this time.
Somebody keeps muting me, sorry. Mr. Flannery, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony will give before this board the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Brian Flannery, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. This application, as indicated, is for a, two small lots in Lakewood that would contain just parking as part of a facility that's being built in Jackson. The Jackson Planning Board does need to review and approve this also due to the limited nature of the impact on Lakewood because all that's being used on this 0.92 acres of property is 49 parking spaces and the, the access is from County Line Road, which is a county road, so we need county approval as well as exit approval.
But your main, your entrance, your main entrance is in Lakewood property. The traffic is on Lakewood property, is that correct?
We, we have two entrances. One is in Jackson, one is in Lakewood. So as far as which would be the main, there's gonna be traffic traveling Jackson and traveling Lakewood, so it's a combination, all, all on County Line Road. The prior approval was for a 3.14 acre site. We've added a couple lots to this application. It was for 3.14, we're now at 4.165. The prior application was 0.14 acre in, in Lakewood and now we're at 0.92. We submitted as exhibits. So sheet two of the tax map shows lot one, which was the prior application, and lot two, it's now one and two. We did submit the entire set of plans, so the Lakewood Board can see it was a sheet of, a set of 19 sheets. We submitted as an exhibit sheet four of that set, which is the site plan. It shows the 20,000 square foot footprint for a 40,000 square foot office. The prior office was a total of 28,000, so, so we've gone up to 40, 41,000 at this point. And in order to accommodate that, the Lakewood parking criteria is one per 250 square feet, as you heard prior in my application. For Jackson, for general office, which is what this is, they require one per 200 square feet. So Lakewood requires four per thousand, Jackson requires five per thousand. The plan provides.
Right, nobody, nobody allows one per 400, right?
Well, the, the Lakewood criteria in section 800 is four per thousand, which is a, that's a pretty typical standard. Jackson's five per thousand is, is more stringent than most. So Jackson is requiring more parking than the norm and more parking than Lakewood would require, but the, the plan does provide.
So this plan goes along with the Jackson regulations?
And this plan provides parking at one, 189 square feet or so it's, it's, there, there is sufficient parking. All of the details of stormwater, everything Terry mentioned does need to get reviewed. All of the county approval needs to be done. So we're saying we're building 49 parking spaces in Lakewood to accommodate this site and we're asking for an exemption from the board rather than going through the whole site plan process where the board would, would review the property in Jackson, which is gonna get reviewed very stringently by, by Jackson as well.
Brian, is there any variance on parking on the whole property?
There's no variance on, on parking on the entire property. This property in Lakewood is in a B1 zone, which allows the general office, and we're looking at general office, which would, it's a typical office that is occupied from eight in the morning to six at night. It's, you know, the general office like, like we have all over town, so there's nothing unique about it. The report indicates under zoning that no bulk variance is required, none is required in Jackson either. Terry asks to describe the facility and its general office, a two-story general office building. The, the, all site improvements in the property is gonna be privately owned.
Is it medical office?
No, no medical office. And it will be private pickup. I don't know what else the board would need to hear with respect to this. It's, it's pretty simple, a, a non-intrusive use in, in Lakewood supporting a.
Brian, are there any waivers on the parking on the side, parking in the setbacks or what's, pertaining to Lakewood, you're totally clean, no variance, no waivers, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, do we have any questions from any board members?
This application is beautiful. This is a, a application with beautiful sidewalks around the building, two entrances, enough parking, no, no, no waivers requested, no zoning issues. I wish we can get an application like this in Lakewood once in a while, even once.
Starting, starting with that 49 parking spaces. Okay.
Brian, does County Line have a divider in, in between? I don't know that side of County Line.
Yes, I think it's a right out.
Yes, it has, it has a divider, it's right in and right out.
On both exits, on both, right.
Beautiful, what a dream.
Okay, any other board members have any questions? Seeing none, I would open it to the public. Ally, is anybody from the public would like to respond to this?
I did not receive any emails on this application, though.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, you didn't receive either, right?
No, I did not.
Okay, so I will close it to the public and I would ask for a motion on this application.
Himesay will make a motion to approve.
Mr. Pfeffer, you saying something?
Didn't say anything.
Okay.
Himesay will make a motion to approve it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Lady Isaacson, one second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
No.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Fansbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
And Mr. Fuentes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I motion approved. But we still have, we still have one correspondence.
Just a minute, Mr. Herzl, yes, Mr. Fuentes, go ahead.
Do you have enough members where I can leave?
Yes, we do. Thank you for your service and we will call on you in times of need in the future.
Okay, Mr. Fuentes, thank you very much and I hope you feel good.
Thank you, you're welcome, bye.
Okay, good night.
Bye.
Can I leave as well?
Actually, you could. One, two, three, four, we have six members now and one correspondence item remaining.
Himesay will sign it off.
Okay. Okay, the last correspondence.
All right, our last correspondence item is a subdivision, a major subdivision that was previously approved. I'm gonna give you my understanding of what's happened here is this particular lot at the end of this subdivision originally came in and had proposed this setback to the neighboring properties as a rear setback and they obtained a variance for 15, approximately 15 and a half feet. They have revised the plans and now submitted claiming that this is a side setback rather than a rear setback and they only need 15 feet rather than the 15 and a half for which they previously received the variance. Terry does have a review letter on this, going over his interpretation of that request, if you'd like him to start with.
Basically, Ally, the whole difference is a half a foot?
Correct.
Okay. Terry, would you like to go through a report?
Yeah, Chairman, Ally just put the letter up. I mean, it is pretty straightforward. This is really procedural. If the board doesn't have any issues with this request, we, we don't per se. We just felt that it's something that the board backed upon in light of the previous, the previous bulk barriers relief.
Okay, thank you. Any, any board members have any questions? Okay, I think, Brian is not here, but I think half a foot is de minimis.
I think you.
To coin a phrase.
It is a variance, you may need testimony from Mr. Lyons on the record for this.
Okay, thank you, Ally. So Mr. Lyons, you have to be sworn in.
Just swear a firm testimony again before the board, the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth.
I do. John Lyons, professional engineer, professional planner.
Okay, so Mr. Lyons, describe it, please.
As Terry and Ally pointed out, originally, they granted a variance for 15 and a half foot, what they call the rear setback. We're really just asking for another half a foot. I looked at it and I don't know why this property was subdivided with two rears. It has a, you know, we have a rear setback on the north where Ally's pointing out by the 47.57 foot property line, and then there was another rear where she's pointing now. I really should have been presented with, you know, one front, one rear and everything else is inside. That, that aside.
The shape of the house, because it's on an angle, technically, you look on it, you can see two rears.
The patio and everything are on the north end of the house, so.
But I think, I think Glenn, even if you consider it a rear, the board gave you the variance, 15 foot, 15 and a half. So even if there's variance, put it on the record, you're requesting it to bring it down to 15.
Correct, and I think it's a de minimis change to go from 15 and a half to 15 on this piece of property. There are wetlands to the, to the north of this property, so we will not have any direct neighbor right on the other side of the property.
And is there any, anything else you're changing besides that half a foot?
That is it, that's all.
Okay.
Everything else meets the requirements.
Okay, do we have any questions from Glenn, from any board members? Just seeing none. Do we have anybody in the public would like to comment on this?
I didn't, I did not receive any emails on this.
Okay, close it to the public. And I would ask for a motion on this application.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Meyer moves to approve.
I will second, Lady Isaacson.
I will second, Lady Isaacson.
Lady Isaacson, second, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Herschel?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Approval of minutes.
Move.
Moved, moved to second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of bills?
Move.
Moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.